Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 30th Special Board of Education Meeting. It's our reorganization meeting. First is, we have seven members present, none absent. And the next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is, we want to recognize our outgoing board members. Well, first of all, let me turn it over to Mr. Purno to say a few words. I'll follow Mr. Purno and we'll open it up to the board. How does that sound? And then, if I can even, yeah, and then after that, we'll open it up to public comments. We'll go from there. So, Mr. Purno.
Thank you. Well, we just got back from a reception for retirees and people with years of service. And one of the things I said at that meeting just this afternoon was, these events always seem somewhat inadequate. They really should be more special than they are, and I don't know how we would do that. But certainly for anybody who is of service to the community and runs for the Board of Education and decides that they are going to sacrifice some time away from home, they're going to do sacrifice away from their family because of the greater service to the community really needs to be recognized and appreciated for the job they do, all in a volunteer position that pays nothing more than an occasional "thank you" for doing the job we do. And I will tell you, they get that very seldom, unfortunately. It's one of those positions that I think is so key to the welfare of school districts and the community, and yet, most of the time, these positions go unrecognized. But the opportunity tonight is to really recognize two board members who have decided that it's time to move on and give some other people the chance for service. And I just want to say, on behalf of the administration and being a fairly new superintendent, I really appreciated your support in the two years I've been here. Both of these board members have been very supportive and have been very helpful with which became a large transition of the administrative team to Elmhurst. And I can tell you, Maria and Susan, and especially Susan because of her role as board president last year, and as a new superintendent, you always appreciate your first board president. It's always a special relationship, and they always tell you where the pitfalls are and where you need to steer around and what the history is. And Susan, I have to tell you, I really appreciate that. It was invaluable to be with you that first year, to be here, to adjust to Elmhurst and to take on the responsibility of the superintendent. And I can't thank you enough for that support. The behind-the-scenes conversations we had a number of times that were always valuable. Maria, being part of the interview team and your support and faith in the new superintendent goes without saying. We can't do these jobs without that kind of support. And I am just hopeful that you feel, both of you, as you walk away from this position, I hope you understand what a difference you've made for the students of this community and the community in general. You have really touched lots of lives. And again, I don't think that's truly appreciated by the public. But these are tough decisions in difficult times, especially over the last few years. But I can say without hesitation, every decision that was made at this table in the year and a half that I have been here has been made in the best interest of students. And that is not always true in boards of education. But I can honestly say, with this board and the two of you, that was always the case. It was always about the children first. And that's all any community can ask for. And so, it is with heartfelt thanks, on behalf of the administration and the staff, to thank you for your service. Best of luck in the future. How you're going to fill your Tuesday nights, you'll be wondering. And, no, no. There's been no wondering. But again, thank you for your time, all your sacrifices, and thank your families on my behalf, that you were away from them, but it was really a time well-spent for all of us. So, thank you.
I'd like to first start with Mrs. Hirsch. And then the board can say a few things about Mrs. Hirsch, then we'll start on Mrs. D'Erone. Maria Hirsch was elected just four years ago, in 2009. A while ago, I had a conversation with a community member which ended in my suggesting that that community member think about running for the Board of Education at some point. And their response was, you know, "I would really only have four years to serve, and I really think in four years, I really couldn't accomplish anything. No one can accomplish anything in four years." Well, to that person who will remain nameless, I present to you as living proof of the exact opposite, Maria Hirsch. Her commitment to the job, her passion, her countless hours and her enthusiasm has accomplished a great deal on this board over the past four years. And I am ever so grateful, and the community is grateful to you. Just to give you an idea of what Maria has done in the last four years, first of all, she spent half of her time on the Board of Education in the role of the vice presidency. She has served as our policy chair, and I don't know if I can even come up with the right words, but corralled, driven through the rewrite of a policy manual that was no small effort. She was our SACID representative, she served on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, she chaired the Performance Management Committee, and was our representative to the Illinois Association of School Boards, all in four years. When Maria was asked, "Why in the world did you want to serve on the Board of Education?" her response was, "As my children progressed through our schools, my experiences indicated there were opportunities for improvement. Having both the time and energy to devote to our schools, I felt serving as a school board member offered a meaningful way to volunteer and have a lasting impact." And Maria, I have to say, that couldn't be more true. Thank you. During Maria's tenure, we asked her to comment on during her tenure what she considered the board's most important accomplishment. And her response was, "A professional working environment, clear and measurable goals and objectives, and the authority to affect outcomes are requirements for success of any organization. The leadership of the district is responsible for setting the tone and standards for the district staff. Our board and our new administration have made great strides in restoring a professional environment and putting elements in place in order to measure and improve the overall performance of our district." And when we asked Maria what she considered her most important personal accomplishment to the board, Maria replied that "Education is a challenging and rewarding field that is fraught with state and federal mandates. Funding challenges and a few people," and few people, I'm sorry, "that fully understands the intricacies of education today. In spite of these challenges, the elected Board of Education needs to lead the district. The increased involvement of board members in committees and in school buildings has made for a better, more informed, prepared board members." And when asked what Maria has learned over the last four years, she replies, "You will always get a better result if you hear and consider each person's perspective." And finally, shall I leave this to you, your advice for newly-elected board members?
Feel free.
Maria's suddenly gotten a little stage fright. That's highly unusual.
I've probably talked more than my share in four years.
So, Maria's advice to our two new board members is, "Listen carefully, find your voice, and remember that you have been elected to serve all of the students as well as the taxpayer." So, with that, Maria, thank you very much for your time and dedication over the past four years. Our children and our community are much better off because of your service. Mrs. D'Erone, please.
I too want to thank you, Maria. I've been on the board a long time and seen a lot of board members, and we all kind of fit into a continuum of the time and effort that we want to and have to devote to this wonderfully unpaid, part-time job. And, you know, everybody kind of fits between on a scale of 1 to 10, along that continuum somewhere. Maria is over here. I just have never worked with a board member who put more time and energy, did more homework, thought about everything, and the district is a better place because of you. Thank you.
Mrs. Eppner.
As a new board member, I could always count on Maria to help. And my new board member orientation was a lot smoother because of you. You were always available, willing to tell me history about the district, and ready and willing to help new board members, so I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Shall we move on to Mrs. D'Erone? Or Mr. McDona, you have a comment, please?
I was hoping to go last. I guess I am. Maria, I just want to say thank you so much. And remembering how I met you, and it shows why you took this position, is you were teaching religious ed to my kids, and you got through them, so I appreciate that. And through to them, I would say. The thing about Maria is, she does her homework. She's the hardest-working board member that you ever want to meet. The amount of stuff that she goes through analyzes. She provided wealth of information. I intend to take good care of the files that you entrusted to me, and I will look at them, certainly not with the level of detail that you prepared them with. The other thing that I'm extremely grateful for you doing is leading off the questioning. I remember in our first meeting, the four of us are sitting as brand-new board members like deer in the headlights, and thank God for Maria, because she had questions. And the reason she had questions is she's got one of the quickest minds I've ever seen, that she immediately sees things in context, sees how they interact. She analyzes, and she brings very able analysis to all our issues, going back to what I first said, guided by that love of kids. And I'm grateful for your service. Thank you.
Mrs. Stufan.
Maria, you really do represent what the school board is about. It's about the students, it's about being good stewards to the taxpayers, it's about doing the right thing, it's about leading by example, it's about doing the homework, it's about bringing new board members on board the way that they need to be, to be informed, prepared, having their voice, understanding how to quickly get their voice, even though that's difficult. But everything that you do is done well, and that's a great example for us. And so, we're indebted to you for that, because we are better new board members because of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Bloom.
Everybody has to.
I mean, I can just, I am amazed that it's only been four years. Your depth of knowledge, every time I think I've got my arms around something, 20 feet deeper than I am. I can only hope to have a fraction of your knowledge by the time I'm done with my board service. I mean, your expertise in so many different areas, I can't help believe that there's a superintendent's job somewhere in your future. But, I mean, you're just, and I appreciate your patience. And I think you had four new board members to deal with, and we all had wide-eyed idealism and a lot of questions, and kind of helping us figure out how it really works was extremely valuable. And again, so thank you very much. The board is losing an incredible resource.
So, let me make one quick comment.
I'm glad we got you there.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I want to thank my fellow board members. I think one of the things that I'm probably most proud of is that every person sitting at this table dedicates a ton of time and energy and resources to doing the job that we all stepped up to do. And I have to say, the thing that I'm most proud of is working hard to bring on four new board members at once. To have a collegial board, we don't really have factions as a board. We have seven individuals who come with prepared, thoughtful input, and I think we do a very good job of listening to each other and learning from each other and trying to come to a really good decision, a better decision. And I think that it's very hard to do with the Board of Education. It's hard to have seven people try to come under the same page and make good decisions. But I think the biggest message that I want to say, and I want to thank you for all of the work that you put in, but I think, to me, the Board of Education is pretty removed from the student experience for our kids in the classroom. And that is the most important thing that this organization does. And I want to thank Mr. Purno for his leadership. I want to thank what we now refer to as the Cabinet, our leadership team, and the district office, and the teachers. We were at the retirement, the recognition of service, and it's humbling. This is nothing. Four years on the Board of Education, it was hard, it was challenging, I was up at 2:00 in the morning, but really, 35 years of teaching kindergarteners is something that is really humbling. And that's what this is supposed to be about. I want to thank, I think earlier I spoke on the phone with Mr. Hellman at one point. New board was seated, and we were talking about the vision and the mission statement and having these long, arduous discussions about words and how many words and can it fit on a T-shirt. And we were getting really far away, and Mr. Hellman, we asked the cabinet, new cabinet, for some input, and they all just kind of sat there, "I'm not biting." And yet, Mr. Hellman was the one that spoke up and said, "You know, in all the discussion, I haven't heard the word 'kid' or 'student.'" And we're so blessed to have a strong leadership team in place, that when we sometimes get off-target, yes, we're all here for the kids, but sometimes you get off-target. And we have a really strong team, and it goes, the person who is in front of that student every day is the one that has the greatest impact. And we're here to serve that, we're here to support that, we're here to figure out how to make that teacher in the classroom, that aide working with the kid, better, so that kid can have a better outcome. So, I want to extend my thanks and appreciation to the staff of District 205, who probably never has come to a board meeting and doesn't really even know that this is happening tonight. But those are the people. The whole team together, working together, is what makes us successful, not just a board member doing a lot of reading. So, thank you very much.
You know, I thought long and hard about Mrs. D'Erone doing this job for 20 years, a job that for every "thank you" or "compliment" you get, you get a dozen criticisms. So, I thought about the words "commitment," "dedication," "stamina," "perseverance," all apply, but I've decided on the word "incredible." Mrs. D'Erone was elected in 1993 for the first time. She was re-elected in 1997, 2001, 2005, and again in 2009. During that 20-year career, she served as secretary in 1997, '98, '98, '99, '02, '03, '04, and '08, '09, as vice president in the school year '99, '00, and as president in 2005, '06, '06, '07, and 2011, '12. Committees she's served on, fundraising practices, graduation requirements, policy, park, park district, school district, relationship committee, the Illinois Association of School Boards, she was our representative to curriculum and instruction and finance and operations. Just to give you an idea, Susan's worked with 20 different board members on the school board in her 20 years. She's worked with four different superintendents. When Susan joined the school board in 1993, District 205 had 6,244 students. Today, we have 8,335. So, a one-third increase. 2,091 students moved to Elmhurst during her career, and I will contend that those families moved to Elmhurst for the schools. When asked, oh, you know, one more thing, is Mrs. D'Erone has also made it through and been a major driver in the writing of, "Is it two or is it three policy manuals?"
Just two.
Just two. I do have a deep appreciation for what it takes to get through one policy manual, let alone two. When asked, "What drew you to serve on the Board of Education?", I think Mrs. D'Erone's is a classic story. In the mid-1980s, she said, "I served on the Tree Towns Cooperative Nursery School Board, where former board president Pat Collins taught. She encouraged me to think about running for the school board. The hook was set. After my children were at Edison for a few years, and I was working with the PTA, I served on a strategic planning team as a parent rep under Superintendent Russ Themes." This is where she begins to get reeled in. "I met many teachers and administrators and found it to be eye-opening, fun, and rewarding. As an outcome of that committee, we established the District 205 Foundation for Educational Excellence." And that's a good point. I forgot to mention that Mrs. D'Erone is a founding member of the District 205 Foundation. "And I became a founding member of that group. Over the years, I began coming to school board meetings, and in the summer of 1993, I was hooked." Actually, Mrs. D'Erone, this is the point where you were reeled in. "I wanted to do what I could to ensure that the great education I had received at York would continue to be available to all of the children of the Elmhurst community. I wanted a part in shaping the future." I just think that is an absolute classic story of a dedicated school board member. So, when asked, "During your tenure on the Board of Education, what would you consider to be the board's most important accomplishment?", Mrs. D'Erone replied, or should I leave this to you? "Without a doubt, there were two important accomplishments. The passage of the 2000 York referendum and both of the 2006 referendum, which provided for the creation of multipurpose rooms at every building and a rate increase to ensure continuation of programs and services for our children." And may I mention that the 2000 York referendum was an effort that was started in Elmhurst, really, in the early 1970s. It took a generation, and it took Mrs. D'Erone and the board she served on at the time to make that a reality in Elmhurst, because it had been worked on, started, in the early 1970s. The night the York referendum was on the ballot, and I find this the most interesting part of Mrs. D'Erone's resume. "The board and their spouses were together at the district offices at Madison School, anxiously awaiting returns." And I really hope that Mrs. D'Erone, when she speaks, will expand upon this. "When we knew that it was a go, we jumped in our cars, some of us headed to Dominick's, and we met at York, proceeding to TP the trees along the Old Circle Drive. The superintendent stayed back long enough to notify the Elmhurst police that it was the Board of Education that was out of control on the York property, and not to worry." I would like to hear further details upon that. Now, besides that, she was asked, "While serving on the Board of Education, what do you personally consider to be your most important accomplishment?" I mean, I think TP in the trees at York, and not getting put in the husk, is a pretty good one. "Bringing a measure of clarity and voice of reason to the board table. Number two, providing a supportive ear to four administrations and their staff while still being able to point out areas for improvement and advocate for positive change. And three, recently helping to shape the culture of a new, very dedicated board." I will also add to that, that we have policy manuals that are written in parallel construction, properly punctuated, with an eye to detail that only Mrs. D'Erone has, and we're very thankful for that. And, "In 20 years, what have you learned while serving as a Board of Education member?" Mrs. D'Erone's reply, "Most importantly, that every issue has more than two sides to it." Robert Fulgham wrote a book in 1990 titled, "All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten." It turns out that everything I learned at field school in kindergarten is what I have also learned while serving on the board and remains true. And those things are, all people are different, respect them for that. Everybody needs to share and compromise, take turns talking, everything takes longer than you would like it to, take a nap every afternoon. That is my favorite. Or at least, put your head down once in a while, step away, and gain some perspective. And finally, sometimes saying nothing is better." And as far as advice, can I leave that to you?
I'm up.
Excellent.
Unfortunately, for board members, I have a lot of advice. As you've heard, two years ago, there were four new board members, and the two old board members had two years of service. So, these past two years, I've kind of assumed the role of not just board member, but mother of the board member. And it's not like parenting seven-year-olds at all, more like parenting teenagers, if you get the analogy in my drift. So, all the sitting board members have heard all of this advice already, but you're going to have to hear it again, as I repeat myself, for the benefit of our two new board members, who I am delighted to welcome. First, you've lost your historian. In the words of George Santayana, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." I have none of the answers, but a lot of the background, and I'm in the phone book. Next, remember, as Mr. Collins has said, that there are more than two sides to every story. Find out all of them before you form a conclusion. And try to remember that with all decisions, particularly the tough ones, and I suspect you all will be making some pretty tough decisions in the very near future, you are always going to make somebody unhappy. And those unhappy people will let you know. So, you've done your research, you've looked at all sides of an issue, you've soul-searched as to what is best for the district, and you've made your decision. You've chosen, in your mind, the best option, sometimes from a plate of really bad options, but you've made your decision. And suddenly, you have this room full of angry people queuing up at the microphone, ready to go. People are writing letters to the editors. Someone mentions you by name on a news blog. And you find yourself in a grocery store in a neighboring town, because you don't want to run into anybody you know. So, if new information in all of this is brought to light, certainly, reevaluate and even change your mind. But if it isn't, let it go. You were elected for your values and to do the hard work to get to the hard decisions. So, stand by those decisions. Someone is always going to disagree with them. Often, it's your fellow board members who might disagree with them. During my tenure, as we have said, the board has completely rewritten the policy manual twice. So, the best advice I can give to you on policy, don't view it as a way to correct something. Write your policy as a way to prevent something. Try to mentally step out of the current situation that you're in and think about all the "what ifs" that you're dealing with. that you're dealing with. And I'm sure that everyone has heard this before, but take it to heart. Never put anything in an email or a text that you do not want to see as a headline in the local media. Enough said. A common tendency when you first come on the Board is to think that the meetings are too stuffy and too stilted, and there's not enough casual conversation, there's not enough back and forth, and that everything should be just a tad more dialed down, a little more casual. My advice is to learn and use parliamentary procedure. Someday, you may need it to protect democracy. And if you should, you really want that to be second nature. Right, Mr. President?
I've written it down and memorized it.
Disabuse yourself of the notion that you are on the Board to fix things. You are here to reflect the values of the community and help shape change. Everything, everything is more complicated than you can imagine right now. Take a deep breath. Give yourself a good, long time to learn about the complex workings of this great institution. Get to know all of these thoughtful, intelligent people who work so long and so hard to create the best possible education for our children. No one wants us to succeed more than they do. And finally, enjoy your time on the Board. You will make a difference. Thank you all. It's been an honor.
Trying to decide if, I guess we should present these first and then open it to public comments?
Are there any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. And we have the entire Board that I've completely skipped over. My apologies. Mr. McDonough.
Thank you so much, Susan, for your friendship, as well as your example. I don't think anyone in this room can imagine this Board without you sitting up here, and it's a little scary on the other side without you there. Your greatest gift to me was to listen, to listen to some of my silly ideas and my different angles, and to give them respect, and to apply your experience and everything that you've been through in these 20 years. Think about it, 20 years on the Board, and I'm grateful for that and the way you approach it. I think everybody's been in a committee meeting or in a board meeting where some things will be going on, and when Susan spoke, a hush came over, because everybody wanted to see what that new thing was you were going to bring, bringing. And it usually was experience. I will be calling you. I will be listening to the history. It's incredibly valuable. And all I can say is thank you for the example. And again, I would say to the Board, new Board members, as an example. I wish you could have sat here two years or four years to watch Mrs. Derone, but this is the example of what a Board member should be. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Stuvin?
Okay. Susan, thank you very much for the history, the wealth of knowledge, and being open to, even during the campaign, to call you and get the background and history and words of advice. It's invaluable, and your dedication to students and the community and the district is very much appreciated. Thank you.
This is not a command performance, you know? You don't have to just go right on the line. If you want to take a pass, I'll get it.
Absolutely not. Thank you. I still think back to, I mean, seeing you guys here, thinking back to two years ago and kind of the wide eyes, and how does all this work and what's going on, and that steady hand that you had as we went through that, and being our president and kind of herding the cats. You know, as we kind of went through this, we were all, again, coming in here wide-eyed, and we're going to do all this stuff, and it was, it was a lot of, well, let's, let's talk about how this works. And your wisdom and your context helped immeasurably. And then, you know, from there on to, I mean, our dealings in the committee side, and we'll be talking about things and understanding, and you bring that context, and all of a sudden, start, stuff starts to make a bit more sense, and it's going to be sorely missed. You know, your ability to kind of warn of that cliff that we're fast approaching before we get off of it. So, please, feel free to call if you see us headed towards any in the near future. And lastly, I mean, there are times when we have difficult decisions to make, and I'm driving here, and I was like, "How did Susan do this for 20 years?" And you get here and you realize that it is that dedication for the kids, it's that, you know, because if it wasn't for that, you couldn't do this for 20 years. And so, I mean, it really is, you know, the manifestation of that, of that commitment. And we really appreciate your service, and thank you very much.
I have to say something, too. Again, like Maria, you are always right there for me. If I had a question, you would be very responsive, so I really appreciate that, trying to get all of us up to speed. And your selfless service, it was always, nothing about you is always about what's best for the district, what's best for the kids. So, I'll always remember that, too.
So, Susan, we talked at the luncheon. Do we really need to show up tonight? Can we just go? But we did. We followed through. We came to, I came to four years' worth of meetings, and I can't imagine how many hours that you have invested in our children, in my children. I have a 20-year-old. So, you know, you've been on the Board the entire time that my child has been alive. I am impressed by that. I really am. I think the thing that I am so impressed by the most is that in 20 years, education has changed incredibly so, and continues to change at an ever-increasing rate. And Board service has changed dramatically in 20 years. And when I try to imagine the changes that you've been through in 20 years, I can't. So, I'm impressed by, I think, some of Mr. Collins' adjectives, really, the perseverance in being willing to be open and learning a whole new way of governing. I think, you know, learning, obviously, 20 Board members, dealing with 20 different personalities who are very committed to education and all try to speak at once. The patience that you have had over 20 years has been, has been impressive. But I think what I recognize in you, at times I recognize in me, and that's the commitment to our kids and the commitment to all of our kids. And that's really what it takes to be able to sit up here and to make these really hard decisions. Because you can imagine, when, when you have to make really challenging decisions, I can't help, and I am very confident that you can't help, but imagine that it's your own child that's being affected by that decision, even though they've grown up, they've aged out, they're no longer in the system, but you really think about it from that, from that perspective. So, I'm very, I've always been very impressed with that. I'm stunned by 20 years, and I'm very proud to be able to say that I served on a Board with Susan Derone. Thank you.
So, first, to Maria Hirsch, member of the Board 2009 to 2013. "In recognition and appreciation of four years of faithful service to the children, staff, and community of the Elmhurst School District by the Board of Education, Elmhurst Community Unit District 205, April 30, 2013." And presented to Susan Derone, member of the Board 1993 to 2013, President of the Board 2005 through 2007, 2011 to through 2012. "In recognition and appreciation of 20 years of faithful service to the children, staff, and community of the Elmhurst School District by the Board of Education, Elmhurst Community Now, normally, I say that student recognition is the best part of any school board meeting. And to have this stack of public comments usually means that we probably made a decision the community really doesn't agree with. But I have to say, this is the happiest part of this school board meeting, the public comments section. If I can, I'll just call up people two at a time, so you, so you know who follows who. Laura Atchinson, please come up, state your name, your address, and your topic, followed by Nancy, and I apologize, Nancy Bajuric? And then, followed by Jean Bruno. And then, we have more after that. I think, with, with some exception, we can make an exception this time.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jean Bruno, and a few of us who've known and loved Susan Derone even longer than she served on this school board would like to just take a couple of minutes to speak. Even before she won her first District 205 School Board election, Susan Derone already had a history of service to local schools. In fact, the three of us met when we all served on the Board at Tree Town Cooperative Nursery School back in a little while ago. And we have been friends and admirers of Susan ever since. How fitting it is that this week, the Gold and the Apple Awards are being given for excellence in teaching. Susan deserves the Gold and the Apple Volunteer Award for Excellence as a dedicated, longtime school board member. Being third-generation Elmhurst, born and raised, has given her a context. She has been devoted to keeping education in her town at its best for her children and for all the children of the residents of Elmhurst. District 205 is the beneficiary of that dedication. She has weighed all the issues with intelligence, careful consideration, fairly and calmly. And watching her has taught me what it means to be a volunteer in a public service and the many, many hours she has devoted. We are proud to have this outstanding citizen of Elmhurst as a friend of ours. And these comments are given with the collaboration of Mary Jo West, who could not attend.
After working with Susan on the Tree Town Nursery School Board, we became aware of Susan's passion for education, her common sense, her understanding of this community and its history, and her devotion to the families of Elmhurst. We were most happy to support her candidacy for District 205 School Board in 1993. And we fondly remember celebrating with her at Bailey's after her first speech to the community at a League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. The response to her speech indicated that Elmhurst residents were recognizing Susan as a perfect fit for the school board, and the election results proved that the community supported her, not just in the 1993 election, but in four subsequent elections. For me personally, as a teacher in District 205 and an Elmhurst resident with children in the district, having my friend Susan on the school board made me feel proud of her and secure and confident about school board decisions. I knew that Susan, in her calm, quiet manner, would be able to articulate staff and community concerns to her fellow Board members, and as the voice of reason, would work with them to find reasonable solutions. Difficult issues with students would be handled with compassion for individuals, while recognizing the need for safety and fairness for the student population as a whole. We all feel that student was, that Susan has been a true supporter of teachers, administrators, and professional staff, and I never felt that it was us against them, teachers against the school board. We've been on the same side, seeking what is best for our children, our staff, and our community. We each recognized and respected our different perspectives, and Susan always maintained that voice of reason with grace, humor, and charm. You will miss her. The Elmhurst community will miss her, but it will be so much easier for us to schedule dinner dates with Susan. And thank you, Susan.
Our next two speakers are actually two people that I think that I would advise the Board, our relatively young and inexperienced Board, to keep their phone numbers right next to Mrs. Derone's, and who I think are experts on the subject of Mrs. Derone and serving on the school board with her, Marta Davey and David Carlquist.
Marta Davey, 340 Sturgis Parkway. First of all, I would like to congratulate Margaret and Emily. I think that you are in for just a wonderful experience, and it will be very gratifying the way you're able to contribute to our community by serving on the school board. So, I congratulate you both. I had the privilege of serving with both Maria and Susan. Maria, I really enjoyed the two years that I spent with you. I wish it could have been longer, but for both of us, you know, our, our timing didn't coincide for any longer stay. I was on the school board 12 years, all with Susan, and I could really take a walk down memory lane if we had the time, and I promise I won't do that, but things have changed. And early on, '93, I was sitting out in the audience as a parent with young children, just listening with bated breath to some of the decisions the school board was making at the time. Portable classrooms? We had, we had a huge issue with portable classrooms. Later came the parade of togas, when we were eliminating Latin, and so we had people coming to speak with their togas on. You know, I could, I could go on and on, but I just, I won't, because I think the important thing is to know that Susan has been a leader in our community. She has been a mentor to me personally, coming on the school board. I looked up to her as to other senior members of the Board, and the leadership that she exemplified, I think, went a long way for me, as it, as it has, as we've heard tonight from others. So, she has shaped a generation of children, and the education they get, and she's also protected the taxpayers of our community to make sure dollars were spent wisely, because everything Susan has done, she has done it for the right reasons and done it very thoughtfully. And she's one of the most intelligent people I know, and a quick study, and has made excellent decisions. And so, as the mentor she's been, I want to thank her for that. And I will end by saying that when the York referendum passed, I was like a new Board member, so I only did what I was told to do. That's all.
Dave Carlquist, 393 Hill Avenue, parent of two York graduates and one York junior, and a community member who's very appreciative of the work that all of you do on the Board of Education. Thank you very, very much. I'd like to take this opportunity to, first of all, publicly congratulate the recently-elected members of the Board of Education and to thank all of you for your District 205 stewardship. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Collins, your reelection and for your tenacity. You've got just, what, three more elections, three more terms after this one to catch up with Mrs. Derone. As a senior member of this Board that will have an accumulated years of experience of 12 years, your leadership in whatever role that takes through your organization alike will be greatly needed and, and I'm sure appreciated. To Mrs. Bastido and Mrs. Harrell, I wanted to say congratulations on being newly elected to the Board. I'm confident that you will find your Board service challenging and yet personally very gratifying. Most of all, I believe that you will bring a great value to this district through your unique qualities and by a level of teamwork and collaboration that I know each of you exhibit in many different walks of life and in your contributions already to our district and our community as you sit at the Board table, and, and really have influence over policy governance, which really is the most important role of a member of the Board of Education. And Mrs. Hirsch, thank you for your four years of service. Time flies when you're having-- Time flies when you're having fun, right?
Thanks.
Thank you for your focus on student performance, on district operational excellence. That has been already acknowledged through the comments this evening, and of course, for an updated, fresh policy manual. A labor of love, I know. And last but not least, I want to congratulate and thank Mrs. DeRoni for her twenty years of service to the district and the community as a 205 board member. It was November of nineteen ninety-three, first week of November, the first Monday meeting at that time. Mrs. DeRoni was one of three newly-elected members to the board, and upon her swearing-in, DeRoni said she was delighted and deeply honored and excited to be here. And then she added, "Now, let's get to work." And that she did. Susan's contributions to the district are immeasurable, and you've heard many of those things heralded this evening. She shaped board policy, as I said, a fundamental role of a member of the Board of Education. She helped modernize and expand instructional space across our schools at all levels, from the early childhood program and facility, all the way through to our high school. And she did all of this while maintaining a very keen eye on finances and really shepherding the public trust and the public resources. But most of all, Susan, you did it by being tuned in, tuned into the community. You did it by being supportive of the administration and the superintendent and the teaching staff, and through it all, as has been mentioned, you always looked for what was best for children. Susan has provided leadership in many ways over the twenty years. Sometimes it was official, she had the gavel in her hand as board president, as you heard mentioned on two different occasions. She was especially helpful during this time of transition, I think, with new leadership in the board. But she was also, I think her leadership was also very evident in informal ways. And I'll also reference, like modeling the way of how a good board member operates to ensure that voices are heard, order is maintained, and the board gets things done, Robert's rules of order and parliamentary procedures, so I was glad to hear that acknowledged. Susan, your intellect and thoughtfulness and precision and attention to detail have been incredible aspects of your board leadership. And I think on top of that, it has been the recognition that there are many ways to solve a problem or to create new value in the district. And it was your intellect and thoughtfulness and astute approach to problem-solving and working with the board that really showed the light on many different ways to attack a problem, and then to really grind on that deliberation and end up with what I believe was an outstanding outcome in each of those cases. I think board members knew you had done your homework when you came to a meeting, because she would walk up to the table, set down the three-ring binder, three-inch, three-ring binder with board agenda and backup material, three-hole punched, dog-eared, with a myriad of colorful Post-it notes peppered throughout all those pages. In those cases, we knew we were in for one heck of a meeting, right? Through everything, you quickly recognize a path to a solution. You modeled outstanding boardsmanship. And one of the ways you did that was by always asking your superintendent, "What's your recommendation?" And I think that is another hallmark of a board member that you demonstrated through those twenty years. I could go on and on, but the time that we have for public comment is inadequate to represent fully the wonderful contribution you've made to Elmhurst and to this board over twenty years of service. I will also, like Mrs. Davey, acknowledge, get it on the public record, the taping was Mrs. DeRoni's idea. It was, it's her idea. Mrs. DeRoni, thank you for a job well done. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments that I didn't get, the little blue slip of paper? And hearing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Next is the approval of board meeting minutes from our April twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen meeting. Are there any changes to those meeting minutes? Hearing none, then those meetings stand as posted. And next, we move into the reorganization of the Board of Education. We have received, as is the law in the state of Illinois, the canvas of votes for the consolidated general election from DuPage County. The top three vote-getters in the election are Jim Collins, Emily Bastido, and Margaret D. Harrell. Next is the oath of office to the new board members, which I'm going to ask Mrs. Hirsch to administer.
Margaret and Emily, if you wouldn't mind coming in up, we're going to do this on camera.
And of course, Jim is going to stand.
Maria, could you mind using the podium for the mic for the sound?
Yeah, I'll come on over here.
Come on.
Take her out on the way.
Here, we can share, and reuse the word.
Why don't you guys go stand right in front of her, you're going to be on camera. Come on.
Do we need to raise our right hand?
I don't recall. Mrs. DeRoni, do they need to raise their right hand as they're taking the oath of office? I get Mr. DeMichael in the audience saying yes.
You are on your own with this one.
Okay, it is my privilege to administer the oath of office to our incumbent returning to the board and our two new board members. So if you can please repeat after me. I, unto your name...
James Collins.
...do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education...
The duties of the Office of the Member of the Board of Education.
...of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205...
Of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205.
...in accordance with the Constitution of the United States...
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
...and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayers' interests...
I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
...by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets...
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
...I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion...
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion.
...by my fellow board members...
By my fellow board members.
...and others who seek a hearing before the board...
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
...while respecting the privacy of students and employees...
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
...I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority...
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority...
...as an individual...
As an individual.
...and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board...
And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
...while retaining the right to seek changes...
While retaining the right to seek changes.
...in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
In such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
[applause]
We're going to adjourn, and then you're going to take your seats, so don't wander too far.
Okay.
So, as President, I declare our meeting adjourned. So this is where our outgoing board members exchange places with our incoming board members. We are now back in session.
Yes, and as part of the reorganization, I would like to open to the board nominations for President Pro Tem. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate John McDonough.
Do I have a second for that nomination? Is there any other nominations for the board? Hearing none, I close the nominations. All those in favor of John McDonough to be President Pro Tem, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven-oh. And you are now President Pro Tem, and you will take the rest of the meeting.
He's not sharing.
Oh, he is.
If you're going to be President, you've got to have the tool.
I feel like Gollum. First and only order of business for this administration is I would ask for nominations for the position of President of the Board of Education. At this point.
Mr. McDonough, President Pro Tem, I think you take nominations for Secretary first.
Okay. Okay. I'd ask for a motion...
A nomination.
Or ask for nomination of a Secretary Pro Tem.
I nominate Mr. Bloom as Secretary Pro Tem.
Is there a second? Are there any further nominations for Secretary Pro Tem? No further nominations. All those in favor of Chris Bloom as Secretary Pro Tem, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? An opinion of the chair? The ayes have it. For Chris Bloom, for Secretary Pro Tem. I'm sorry, I'm not reading too well here.
Just use the gavel.
Okay.
Now you can call the new meeting to order. Call the new meeting to order.
Okay. I call the new meeting to order, and I would ask Mrs. Walsh to please call the roll of the new board.
Mrs. Bastido?
I can't work the microphone.
Here. Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Mr. McDonough?
That's a vote of seven in favor of...
There's a vote that we're going to roll call.
Or the roll call. Sorry, I'm completely thrown off here. Do I, okay, seven members present. The President, okay. I would entertain nominations for the position of President of the Board of Education. Mr. Bloom?
I would like to nominate Jim Collins for President of the Board of Education.
Is there a second on that nomination? Nominated by Mr. Bloom, seconded by Ms. Ebner. Are there further nominations for the President of, for the position of President of the Board of Education? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Collins for President of the Board of Education, please say aye.
Aye.
An opinion of the chair? Mr. Collins has won the position of President of the Board of Education. Sorry about that.
All right, next order of business, the election of a Vice President. Do I hear nominations for a Vice President of the Board of Education? Mrs. Stufen?
I would like to nominate Ms. Shannon Ebner as the Vice President of the Board of Education.
A second? Nominated by Mrs. Stufen, seconded by Mrs. Bastido. Are there any other nominations for position of Vice President of the Board of Education? Hearing none, we just move right and, hearing none, we can close nominations, and having only one nominee, declare Mrs. Ebner as Vice President of the Board. Nominations for Secretary of the Board. Mrs. Ebner?
I nominate Mrs. Karen Stufen for Secretary of the Board of Education.
A second?
Second.
Nominated by Mrs. Stufen for Secretary of the Board, nominated by Mrs. Ebner, seconded by Mr. McDonough. Do I hear other nominations for Secretary of the Board of Education? Hearing none. Default, Mrs. Stufen is the new Secretary of the Board of Education. Next is the establishment of our regular meeting schedule. We have published a tentative list of future meeting dates that all the board members have. Do our new board members in possession of those as well? Are there any objections to this, to this list? And again, any meeting that we find we don't need, we are always at liberty to cancel. So, so, all in favor, or are there any objections to the proposed calendar? Then hearing none, the proposed calendar will be established. The next is reaffirmation of all existing contracts and policies. Mrs. Walsh, do we need a roll call vote on that? I believe we do. Thank you. So, to reaffirm the board's existing policy and all contracts that the previous board has entered into, Mrs. Walsh, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. All policies and contracts that were entered into by the previous board stand as they exist. Next is board committee appointments. So, we have rearranged a little bit. We've separated the Policy Committee from the Board Improvement Committee, even though they'll be scheduled on the same time at the same night, they'll just be a different group of people meeting on Board Improvement Nights versus Policy Nights. The Board Improvement Committee, the board felt that the three officers would form that committee, the President, Vice President, and Secretary. Curriculum and Instruction Committee members, Shannon Ebner as Chair, John McDonough, and Emily Bastido. The Finance and Operation Committee members, Chris Bloom as Chair, Shannon Ebner, and Karen Stufen. The Performance Management Committee members, Karen Stufen as Chair, Chris Bloom and Margaret Harrell. Policy Committee members, John McDonough as Chair, Emily Bastido and Margaret Harrell. Our representative to lend, Karen Stufen. Our representative to the SACID Board of Directors, John McDonough. Our delegate to the Illinois Association of School Boards, Margaret Harrell. Our delegate to the Illinois Association of School Boards, Margaret Harrell. Our representative to the Lizardo Museum Board, Emily Bastido. And our, our two representatives to the City of Elmhurst, Elmhurst Park District and Elmhurst School District Joint Committee, Chris Bloom and John McDonough. Those are committees, our representatives to other boards and committees. Is that, Mr. McDonough, please?
Just point of order. Under the policy, do we need to approve that as a board? Because we wrote that, rewrote that policy, and frankly, I don't have my policy manual.
To be
Maria's shaking her head no, so.
All right, there we go. Anybody have any objections to the assignments made? Hearing none, we'll let those committees stand. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings. Tuesday, May 14, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM in this room. Tuesday, May 28, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM in this room. And are there any board communications? Hearing none. And seeing that there is no further business on our agenda, I hereby declare, oh, Mr. Smith, Ms. Smith.
I believe that the meeting on the 28th was moved to the 29th due to promotion
Oh, thank you very, very much, yes. Due to middle school promotion ceremonies, we have moved the Tuesday, May 28, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting to Wednesday, May 29. Thank you very much for pointing that out. Thank you. Now, hearing no other business or other corrections to my mistakes, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.